How's it going?
All right. How about you?
Are you feeling better?
Yeah, things are back to normal.
But I have, that's expected. And I have an appointment tomorrow with the doctor.
If I could, please have a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Seconded.
Can I have your attention, please? We're starting our meeting and it would be lovely. Thank you. That was so nice of you. All right, so we've had a motion to adjourn from executive session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, we are starting our regular meeting and we will start off with another roll call.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prithrich?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. Nagley?
Here.
All right, we'll now do a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you're welcome to.
Hi. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there anything that needs to be adjusted or changed in any way? Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And we'll go to public participation. Our first item is appointments to boards and commissions and we have one opening.
I would like to nominate Ann Fuer for the unexpired term ending in June 2028 to the Housing Advisory Committee.
Okay. Are there any objections or any other nominations? All those in favor indicate by saying...
I'll second.
I guess second, yeah. Second.
I thought you did. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, now we get to hear from some of our favorite people from the Oxford Seniors. Please come on up. Emily in...
Hi.
Hi, Emily.
Hi, I'm Emily Lipton. For those of you who don't know me, I have the privilege of being the executive director of Oxford Seniors and we just wanted to share what we've been up to, so... Who's that?
Upstairs is going to catch up to this.
Okay, let me back up then. I don't want to miss our mission. So Oxford Seniors is a local senior center. Our mission is we are dedicated to serving seniors and strengthening community. Our vision is that we strive for a greater Oxford community where no older adult is unsupported or lacks for food, transportation, or opportunities to live a purposeful, connected, and vibrant life, which is my favorite part. So we've been doing a lot and I'm going to talk fast because we have been working hard. I'm first going to focus on the programs that we offer that we get support from the city for, so transportation. I am really excited to announce that we applied for a 5310 grant and we have been told that that is going to be recommended in the fall for approval, which will get us two additional wheelchair accessible vehicles. These are... Yay! So fingers crossed, guys. These will be vehicles that will replace worn out vehicles. We're tired of buying new fuel pumps and we will use them for medical and non-medical transportation in the greater Oxford area and also transportation for our Adult Day Service. So my stats are kind of fiscal year to date, although I for some reason said 1025, but 825, 4,000 rides to almost 200 people. Outreach, this is what we do in the community. It ranges everything from independent living assistance, insurance counseling, all kinds of stuff, education events. So first of all, I need to tell everyone Medicare open enrollment period is October 15th through December 7th. This is a time when plans can change. So open your mail. If you are Medicare eligible, open your mail, read what's in there. We are going to be partnering with the Ohio Department of Insurance to host two public events. They are both free and open to anyone in the public. So those would be appropriate for people who are Medicare eligible, caregivers who might help people who are Medicaid eligible, Medicare eligible, and also anyone who currently has Medicare. We will be doing one-on-one appointments, 30 minutes long, with an insurance counselor to make sure that your insurance drug plan is still going to have that $5 copay when it changes. So last open enrollment period, we helped 233 people save a total of $148,000. We also do a lot of other stuff, free tax preparation, free counseling, benefit application, HEEP, all that kind of stuff. And that's Sabrina Jewell, so she will help solve your problems. We also get support for our programs. So this is what you imagine happens at a senior center. We have 25 programs offered during the month, different programs. We have been able to add yoga, cardio fitness, ceramics, assorted craft classes throughout the month, pickleball, and line dancing. So this now means that we are offering a fitness class every morning, Monday through Friday. So we're really excited about that. Year-to-date, 327 people attended almost 9,000 events, which is really fun, really fun. And this stuff is not open just to members. This is open to anyone of the correct age in the community. If we see you showing up for pickleball three times in a row, we're going to ask you to become a member, but you don't have to be a member to do our transportation and our outreach. Meals on Wheels and our congregate lunch. So we are a Meals on Wheels provider in the greater Oxford area. We deliver hot meals five days a week, frozen meals for Saturday and Sunday. I love to highlight the fact that all of our meals are delivered by volunteers. So it's a hot meal prepared at McCullough Hyde. The meal is good, but what's even better is that someone is going to your loved one's door and they're going to keep knocking until we hand them that meal. And if that person doesn't come to the door, we're going to start calling and we will see that person or we will contact someone who's going to help us get in. So we also provide a congregate meal at the center. This is also donation-based. We ask for 250. We don't check your pockets when you come in the door. It's the same meal that we deliver to our Meals on Wheels clients. I join us, I join the meal at least once a week. I'm having hamburgers tomorrow. It's all good stuff. So year-to-date, we have delivered 8,700 meals to 101 people and close to 9,000 lunches have been served to 136 people at Oxford Seniors. The thing I'm really excited about here is we have been talking with McCullough Hyde, who has been our meals partner since the very beginning, and we are updating our menu. We're adding five new menu choices. So we're going to be expanding our menu and trying to make it, you know, fresh and fun and different. So we're going to have like a chicken croissant sandwich and things like that. So we're really excited about that. It will be available, the new meals, we are serving for a week straight in September. So if you'd like to try our meals, let me know and I'll sign you up for lunch. We offer support groups. These are also free and open to anyone in the community. We have a grief support group on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month at 4:30. That's led by Kim Ogle, anyone who is experiencing a loss. And that can be defined in a lot of ways. There's no age limit, so come if you need that support. We also have a caregiver support group, second and fourth Monday of each month, 2:00 p.m., and that is for people who are caregivers 50 and over. Our Community Adult Day Service. This is, I think, one of our hidden gems. We have this amazing partnership with the Faith Lutheran Church. We have been in their lower level for 25 years. They see it as, I think, as part of their mission. We are one of the only one in Butler County. We provide support, supervision, and socialization for older adults with age-related cognitive or physical impairments. So we have provided 3,346 days of safety for those people in year-to-date. And we also provide transportation for our clients to and from our Adult Day Service and we have people coming as far away as Trenton to join us. What I think is really neat is we have started developing some amazing partnerships. We've always had a great partnership with Miami. We get gerontology students, social work students, all those kinds of people to come, learn with us, support us. We also have a great partnership with Lane Library and they've been bringing in craft projects on a monthly basis. They also bring books and we can do some library exchange on a monthly basis. And then we have some fabulous community members who have been coming in. We had someone lead us in a chocolate tasting at our Adult Day Service. We have some people who come and do a musical presentation every month, sing-alongs, and then we've also had some amazing volunteers come and help work on our patio and garden space. Our lending closet, this is when we get to help out high school boys. Because if you have medical equipment, wheelchairs, knee scooters, bedside commodes, all that kind of stuff, we will take them, donate them to us. We'll make sure they're still safe and clean. We will store them and then we will loan them out to anyone. So anyone, people come from Brookville, people come from Hamilton, moms call me and say, "My son busted his knee and needs a wheelchair for a little bit." And I say, "All right, free of charge. You can keep it as long as you want. Right now, I will give out a free cane with anything else." I have plenty. We're also trying to really get out and connect with the community as much as we can. We have been doing intergenerational game nights throughout the spring semester, the summer, and we will continue through the fall. So once a month, we invite anybody of any age to come and play board games and card games and dominoes with us. We provide the snacks. If you're 12 or under, you do need a grown-up. But come, learn a new game, share a game that's a favorite of yours, and maybe lose to some older adults. We continue to partner with Nancy Parkinson, a Miami dietitian student, Presbyterian Church Coalition Bodega, Butler Rural, to have our free monthly Monday meals. These are on the second Monday of every month. You do not need financial hardship to join us for these meals. You just need to want some community. If you don't want to do dishes, come to us. If you're tired of talking to your spouse, come to us. We'll sit on a different table. Our next event is September 8th. It's going to be pulled chicken or pork barbecue sandwiches. It's a full nutritionally balanced meal. And then we usually have a presentation or a performance of some kind afterward. We've had the Oxford Community Band, we've had Glee Club performances, so that's a lot of fun and we're excited to partner with that. This one I'm super excited about. The Ohio Department of Aging is having six town halls in the entire state of Ohio to get citizen input on their budgeting priorities. We are one of six. So we invite any older adult, disabled adult, or caregiver of those two to come on Friday, September 5th, 2 to 4, to talk to the people who make the decisions, the money decisions, at the State House. So I am told that we are the only town hall that's happening in a rural community. So I think this is a really valuable and important moment to share our perspectives with the Ohio Department of Aging. These are our two Medicare events. I also have some flyers I can hand out about that. We want to make sure that that gets out into the community because I think that can be really important for people. You know, making that transition to Medicare can be really, really scary and we certainly have had people who are in Medicare and find out that their $5 copay is now a $50 copay. And we will put in your drugs, we will put in your providers, and we will see exactly what it's going to cost you. So we are also going to be having a senior health fair, October 17th, with over 20 community vendors, everything from well checks, nutrition tips. We're going to have people doing, talking about what kind of in-home care they can provide, Meals on Wheels providers, all that kind of stuff. So if you have need for those kinds of things or you are a caregiver, please come to us. There will also be snacks and you will have an opportunity to meet different providers. And then out in the community, I wanted to mention how awesome it is that the city does the Red Brick Fridays, that the community groups do the Back to School Bash, the Pancake Breakfast, Fresh Air Fair, all of that. We love that. It gives us at Oxford Seniors such an amazing opportunity to connect with the community, opportunity that we would not have if we were just at our building. So we did Beer Festival, we did the Fresh Air Fair, two Red Brick Fridays, Back to School Bash. We're going to be at the next Red Brick Friday. We're excited to say at Oxtoberfest, we are going to be one of the sponsors who are going to have a Beer Academy tent, so you can get a ticket, ticket and education from Michael Conger about how to drink beer, sample beer. And then we will also be at Farm and Flea, providing a free make here giftable craft kind of thing. So those are always really fun and we're so appreciative of that opportunity. So as part of that thank you, thank you to the city of Oxford for helping to support us in doing all this work. Thank you to all of these donors and organizations, our community donors. I also wanted to acknowledge that there are some board members here. Amber Franklin is here. I have our current board president, Edna Southerd is here. I have Erin Abbott here and I have our secretary, Kate Rumanier is here. And I think that is it. Any questions?
Thank you so much for a thorough presentation. Can you talk a little bit? We see all the things that you offer, all the different classes that you offer, but I know that you've also been impacted by some of the federal funding cuts, including the Service Plus program that used to pay students to teach some of those classes at the senior center. And so many of them just lost their jobs like in April. They stopped having that opportunity. How are you filling the gap? What does that look like?
So, yeah, that was a really significant, had a really significant impact on us. We had between three student positions, we had 45 hours a week of student help. And I did want to really point out that that was a partnership where we paid a third of those student wages. It wasn't free to us. We had skin in the game on that. These were really, really dedicated, really, really highly qualified students. Essentially, it was an additional full-time person at my Adult Day Service that I only had to pay a third of that amount for. They were told retroactively that they could no longer work for us, so they were told their last day was Friday on a Monday, which I found to be really upsetting. And it was really challenging for our students. They, a lot of them still volunteered to do some of the work because they had formed connections with our people. We have, we will continue to be able to offer some of that experience as unpaid internships, but that is a really different situation. I also was lucky enough, it was discussed in the Oxford Free Press, I had a professor reach out. We are probably going to be able to get some psychology interns maybe. Again, those are unpaid internships. So we are going to have some of that support, but it has translated into additional hours of paid staff time. And I think a lot of the changes that are happening right now have added that uncertainty and we are not able to depend on funds like that that we were able to depend on in the past.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Emily, it probably goes without saying, but I'm going to say it anyway, that Oxford is very fortunate to have the Senior Center and we're very fortunate to have you at the helm. So thank you very much from all of us. We're very proud of you.
Well, thank you. I am eternally grateful to be part of this community and part of Oxford Seniors.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, and now we have an opportunity, if anybody's here and would like to speak with council, anybody wishing to address us about items that are not on the agenda or if they're on the consent agenda, this is your opportunity. You can come forward, state your name and where you live for the record and we'll give you five minutes. It's timed. We give everybody the same amount of time, but you can say what you wish. Come on up.
Lee Fisher, 88 Whitetail Run. Good to see some of you again. You'll see later in the agenda, you have the opportunity to address a recommendation from the Parking and Transportation Board about a separate line item for things related to parking and transportation.
I hate to interrupt you, but Lee, if you're going to, unless you're going to have to leave right away, you might stick around because we'll take public comment at that time.
Oh, for this? Oh, I thought it was public comment for anything.
No, it's just the things that are not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. All right, I'll excuse myself.
But you gave us a nice segue.
Yeah, a lead-in.
Yeah, good lead-in.
I'll be back. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Lee. Is there anybody else who'd like to address council?
Hello, my name is Wyatt Holmes and I just moved into 616 South College Avenue. I looked over the 2025 City Council goals and would like an update on Goal 3.h, the other category. It was a proposed measure of success. It's proposed measure of success is that by December 2025, the HAC will explore ways to prevent corporate purchase of homes. Has the council received the report yet?
Okay, this is not a question and answer period. It's just your comments.
Okay.
But you would like to know.
I would like to know if the council's received the report.
That's what you say, yeah.
I've also looked at the economic development plan and one of the recommended industries to invest in is agricultural technology. Would there be any interest in working with 80 Acres Farms? They're headquartered in Hamilton and they're an indoor farming company. You might have seen their products in Kroger, Jungle Gems, or Meyer. I think they would be a good company to reach out to about investment in an industry like that.
Super.
And I would also like to recommend any roundabout projects if there aren't any undergoing or aren't...
Any what?
Roundabout projects.
Groundbound projects.
Yeah. I would like to recommend.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd like to recognize, I'm not sure anyone from the public has paid attention to our goals such that they've mentioned them. So I really want to appreciate a citizen who's paying attention to what we're putting out there. And if you get your contact information, someone from city management can respond to you, so thank you.
The assistant city manager will probably contact you, give you that information. Is there anybody else? Thanks, everybody, for coming. We appreciate it very much. We'll now move to the consent agenda and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved and we'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution affirming the city of Oxford's policy commitment to safe, accessible, and complete neighborhood streets.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. This came from Councilor Prithrich, so I'll let you...
So I'll start with the report on this. I introduced the legislation, but it incorporates recommendations from the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board. So in a good sense, I'm the messenger and not the message here. Just for a little bit of context, the resolution, it's all in the, the resolution basically asks us to affirm mostly things that are already facts or have been adopted by the city. One is that the city adopted a complete streets policy in 2019 that tries to assure safety for all users of all ages and abilities on our streets, including bicyclist motorists and transit riders. So that's the eight to 80, from kids to older people. That that was incorporated in plans that we adopted in 2020, Oxford Transportation Plans, and the 2023 Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan had a goal of safe, efficient travel for all modes of transportation. And when we asked people to vote on their action, there was one that they identified as a priority, which is treat pedestrians and cyclist mobility with equal importance to vehicular mobility. The way the policy works is it's supposed to apply to all projects that are, they should be designed according to best design practices, there are engineering standards for this, unless there's an exemption determined by council because, for example, there's not at a volume of traffic or for other reasons. So this is where we get, that's a restatement of fact, that the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board met and discussed in December of 2024 and then again in April, anticipating that we would be starting to do repaving in neighborhood streets that were constructed without sidewalks, because back in the 50s and 60s, they didn't think those were important. And so Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, that there might need, that we might need to do some work there. So it recommended back in last December that we assure, the city assured safe and equitable access on all streets as part of its 2025 repaving by either reallocating some of the 2025 repaving fund or making a commitment to making necessary improvements, as several capital improvements within a few years of paving. So from speaking to Mike, like maybe there are grants out there, with a few years, we might be able to find a funding source. What kind of improvements, the restatement of fact here is that, you know, a street that doesn't have sidewalks, even in a neighborhood, according to best design standards, should have a sidewalk at least on one side, ideally on both, particularly collector's street should have on both. And if a street doesn't have sidewalks, it should be designed specifically to be shared roadway. So it's, you slow the cars or signage that says, "Hey, pedestrians get the right of way." So, and staff analyzed, and I'm not sure who on the committee was part of that analysis, you guys can tell me about that, but staff itself analyzed the streets and recommended that new sidewalks be installed on ridge and bike lanes according to our transportation plans on Field Crest Avenue. So basically the resolution, but those streets were repaved in 2025 without any of those improvements. So this is basically an affirmation that we stand by our complete streets policy. That's what the first thing is and it's commitment that we are committed to applying design best practices. You know, unless an exemption is justified, there's a process for that, that we accept the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board's recommendation to ensure safe access on these neighborhood streets. You know, if, it's too late for 2025, but within two years by making the requisite changes. And so, so yeah, that's basically it. So it's two things. One, it's a statement, it's a commitment to following the policies that we've adopted and B, it's a substantive commitment to designing streets that are safe for everyone. So I know that there was also a separate resolution that Mr. Perry put together and I'm not sure, it's not on the agenda, but I'm sure, just if you could address it and whether you view it as encompassed in this, or there was a separate resolution, I'm just kind of curious what happened with that.
Okay, all right, done? Okay, thank you. Jessica, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I am going to give the, kind of the staff response to this, to the resolution that is drafted by Councilor Prithrich. So I'll start with that staff very much agree on the importance of the bike and pedestrian infrastructure, like some of us care very deeply about this. And yet I think we are going to say we disagree with the approach on this policy and I'm going to explain that in a minute. This legislation requires that council vote to not pay for complete streets improvements, i.e. new sidewalks for any street resurfacing project. So basically, it's not just a staff recommendation in the CIP process, it's like a separate vote before the CIP has occurred. And so this approach is out of alignment with the city budget cycle and it could limit bike and pedestrian improvements in other areas and this is really where most of our concern comes from. I've kind of learned the past couple of years in working with the city that our budget is pretty stable and so year to year, there's not a lot of change to work with. And so this budgeting cycle is important and so I'll talk about that in a minute. Just as a reaffirmation of how much we care about bike and pedestrian improvement, these are all the improvements we've made over the past several years, including bike lanes, extended sidewalks, ADA curb cuts, rapid flashing beacons. Like when I look at this, I'm like, wow, we really have invested a fair amount over the years. And that's not even including the Oxford Area Trail infrastructure. Over the past couple of years, we have developed a very thorough budgeting process with city council. In January, we have a council and staff retreat and then in June, we present our staff research and recommendations. And this is a key time for councilor input. What did we miss? What did we get wrong? Hey, I didn't see you mention this. I want you to add it, et cetera and so on. And then August to September is a really intense time for staff and the city manager where we sit down and we go through the creation of a capital improvement campaign, or, excuse me, capital improvement plan. During this time, the city manager meets with every department head one-on-one and we, we kind of, we kind of battle it out, who was going to make it onto the budget. And those recommendations on Councilor Prithrich were brought forward and then, you know, they weren't recommended. And this year, just to kind of give you an idea, we reviewed the street resurfacing areas that were a part of that complete streets review and staff said, "You know, we're going to recommend improvements elsewhere." And we use data and prior council input to make these recommendations, but you know what? You can disagree with us. In this process, you can say, "I disagree." And instead, I want you to put it toward these neighborhoods or these sidewalks or whatever and that is your directive to us. And we think that this process could work pretty well. With that, I did pull some maps. These are the bike crashes in the past five years through the Ohio State, Ohio, excuse me, oh, State Highway Patrol. And the darker the green, the more severe the accident. So these are... And the darker the green, the more severe the accident, so these are bike crashes, we've had eight. And in the past five years, we've had forty-four pedestrian crashes where a pedestrian has been hit, and the same thing, the darker the green, the more severe the accident. And so we did look at that, and we also really looked at the mile square safety plan work session that we had in May, and the recommendations that were made in there. And so this was all before the CIP process, and, and so, you haven't seen the CIP yet, it's coming up, but I'm going to give you a hint, that upcoming, you're going to see, in fact, tonight, we're going to squeeze in to 2025, we're going to recommend two new ADA audible crosswalk signals in response to some comments from council. On College Corner Pike, now we're getting to the CIP, we're going, there were three pedestrian accidents last year, we're going to recommend a study for a new traffic signal, new crosswalks with rapid flashing beacons. On Walnut Street intersections, we're, in response to the mile square safety plan, we're going to recommend three curb pedestrian bump outs to protect, excuse me, protect pedestrians. We also have an additional $50,000 for undesignated other bike and pedestrian improvements that could be crosswalks, sharrows, et cetera. I know that a lot of this conversation is about interior bike and pedestrian infrastructure, but I would be remiss if we didn't also mention the millions being invested in the Oxford Area Trail. Phase Five is going to connect neighborhoods and schools, and is over $6 million, and we have a pending grant for Phase Five from the Community Park to Contreras that we're hoping to hear back, and we have a pending grant for the planning from Contreras to Mary Day. And finally, again, during the CIP meeting, the council has an opportunity to say, you know what, I want you to do more here and less here, please add this in, and the city manager listens, if there's council consensus, he'll make an amendment and bring it back. And so, I also think, I just want to remind everyone that we are in a current process right now for bike and pedestrian improvement efforts. This year, we have invested $150,000 for the creation of a bike and pedestrian improvement plan. This has involved public input, a review of safety data, Optab recommendations, et cetera, and we hope to present it to council for hopefully approval in spring of 26. So in conclusion, let's continue the work of expanding the bike and pedestrian infrastructure, but at this time, staff recommends a no vote on the complete street policy changes. We hope that you will use the current budget planning process, and Optab or councilors can make recommendations in June during the budget review meeting, like when we have that, the retreat review, or during the CIP process, or really any time before the budget is approved. And then, you know, you can request it to city manager, or, excuse me, request it to city manager, dedicate more resources toward these efforts, but it, you just need to recognize, it may just mean a shift. You know, if we're doing complete streets and where the repaving is occurring this year, it might mean that we're not doing curb bump outs or rapid flashing beacons over here this year instead. You know, it's just a kind of a conversation of where do you want the funds to go? And then, we hope that you'll use the upcoming bike and pedestrian improvement plan as a guide for future improvements and as leverage for future grants. So, that's our comments at this time, and I'm happy to answer questions or junk in.
Thank you very much, Jessica. This time, anyone in the public who would like to address this particular resolution, now would be a time. Come on up, sir. Somebody can help him find the podium, that would be helpful, thank you. Welcome, it's great to have you here.
Good to be here.
Just give us your name, where you live, and we'll give you five minutes if you need it.
My name is TJ Malloy, I live on Old Farm Road, just past the country club. I, I would submit to council that streets are not complete or accessible if there are no sidewalks. I have a significant stretch of a walk that I take almost on a daily basis that does not have sidewalk, there's about a, there's about a six-house stretch that has sidewalk, and the rest of Old Farm Road that I travel until I get to Contreras doesn't have sidewalks at all. I fortunately have a guide dog here that helps me, but imagine trying to walk down a street or navigate it with your eyes closed, and then imagine trying to do that without a good frame of reference to feel off of, trying to do that while walking down the edge of a road and not having a curb reference. My wife is also blind, and she's afraid to walk in the neighborhood because of the lack of sidewalks there. It's, it's a big safety issue, and, you know, I, I appreciate and respect the improvements that have been made in other places, but you have to be able to get out of the neighborhoods to get to the Oxford Trail and to do the other, get to the other, you know, places where, where the accessible pedestrian improvements have been made. And so, I would encourage a yes vote on the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Hello, council, my name is Carla Blackmar Rice, I live at 201 Northridge in Oxford, Ohio, and I've served on the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, or Optabs, since its inception, and I'm the current chair of that committee. I'm here to ask for your support of this resolution affirming Oxford's commitment to safe, accessible, and complete neighborhood streets. While our complete streets policy, oh, I just wanted to say, our city has come a long way since I first got here in 2017, adding sidewalks and safety improvements throughout the network. But there continue to be parts of town where there are not sidewalks on one or both sides of the street. While our complete streets policy focuses on a network approach, understanding that there may be some areas where other circumstances like cost or grade may make it impossible to serve that as a complete street, those situations should be the exception made by council and not the rule. Since the adoption of the complete streets policy in 2019, Optab has worked to integrate street completion into the annual repaving program. Adding sidewalks, curbs, and gutters where they do not exist can be best and most efficiently done, and affordably done, when it is done in conjunction and concert with repaving. Further, the repaving assessment gives us an opportunity to evaluate the completeness of our street network according to our policy. In December, we recommended to council that there be more integration between the repaving process and the completion of streets, both by ensuring funding and by tying street completion to repaving, and we are asking that the streets be completed within two years of repaving, with sidewalks, or whatever treatment is determined to make them complete. We have seen once again that repaving took place this summer on several streets that currently lack sidewalks, without any public discussion of the incompleteness of those streets. It is possible that sidewalks are not the right answer for these streets for a variety of reasons, but if that is the case, there should be a public process by which those streets are exempted, after taking into account the needs of stakeholders. Simply ignoring the policy or steamrolling the policy will not do. Sometimes, street completeness may not be accomplished through the addition of sidewalks, it could be doing traffic calming, as might have been the case on Bridge Avenue, or still be, hopefully, or other modifications to make locations like the intersection of Old Farm Road and Contreras safe for all users. If we don't uphold our policy, we will never have the discussion about how to keep all of our users safe. And it was interesting, you know, we've tried multiple times to try to integrate this better into the annual cycle, like that's something that we've been endeavoring to do on Optab for years, and we don't want to create additional red tape. However, sometimes putting sidewalks in is a contentious matter, where you need to hear from the community, from the stakeholders, and where stakeholders need to create buy-in for themselves about whether or not they want to support all users. It's a big investment, but it's an area where you need to have a public process to build consensus, and I just feel like we aren't having those conversations, that there would have been some things that would have been brought to light if we had had some of those conversations about these streets in public. So I will hope, and I advocate for you to adopt today's resolution, and I would look forward to participating as a resource to you, to help remove some of that administrative burden, as the chair of your Optab committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carla, appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this resolution? Come on up.
Good evening, my name is Amy Masechko, and I have the privilege of serving as the Health and Wellness Coordinator for the Talawanda School District and the Director of the Coalition for a Healthy Community here in the Oxford area. I would like to take a moment this evening to thank the City of Oxford for the many improvements that have been made in active transportation in the city limits to make it easier for both students and adults alike. Years ago, I remember surveying Talawanda families about the barriers that exist to walking and biking to school as part of the Safe Routes to School Initiative. One of the top concerns was the intersection at 732 and Dana Drive. Today, we have a traffic light that ensures students can safely cross that intersection even in the dark winter months in the mornings, and ease caregivers' concerns. And I shared with Dr. Thoreau, our superintendent, this morning, that I've never seen so many bicycles at Talawanda Middle School on the bike rack as I have this year. It makes my heart happy to see so many students walking and biking to school each day. I also vividly remember meeting at Kramer Elementary and training community members to conduct walk audits along North Locust and Sycamore Streets. From the activity, we compiled data and shared it with the city, now twice a year as I celebrate National Walk-Bike and Roll-to-School Day at Kramer, and I stand on the corner to greet families and students, I'm incredibly grateful of the engineering changes that have taken place to ensure that students and families can safely walk, bike, and roll to school. The Coalition seeks to build a healthier community by making the healthiest choice the easiest choice, and when the physical design of a community allows for individuals of all ages and abilities to engage in active transportation, and community members are incentivized for making healthier choices, we are contributing to the overall health and well-being of the community. We know that a sanitary lifestyle can contribute to many chronic health conditions, such as heart disease, which was recently identified as one of the top concerns through McCullough Hyde Memorial Hospital's Community Health Needs Assessment. As Mark Fenton reminded us when he visited our community many years ago, encouragement and education alone on the benefits of physical activity will not work, other strategies must be used, we need to seek to make the healthiest choice the easiest choice. So I just want to come here tonight to thank members of council and city staff for supporting these significant initiatives, which are truly building a healthier community, and I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to partner in both my roles with Talawanda and the Coalition to make the healthiest choice the easiest choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And you do a great job. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. At this time, I'll open it up to council discussion, and Dave's already talked, I'll start on this side and go back, and then you'll get the rebuttal.
Alright, I have a question for Optab and for staff, did, did we ever generate a list of missing sidewalks in town?
We do have an up-to-date map that Optab has reviewed, and we have done it at a public meeting, at an Optab meeting. It's not a list because it's, there's pieces of streets that have it and some that don't, but it's very much up to date.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have those ever been ranked in any way, in order of significance?
They have not. There was discussion, but it never got to the point of a consensus in Optab for a ranking of which one should be prioritized. But they did review it a couple of times.
Okay.
Alec?
This is a toughie. I agree that we should have complete streets, and I was thinking about this as I was considering our options for tonight. And I think that for me, it lands on doing what is most right, in the, in terms of best practice versus what's most reasonable, and then how do we balance that? And I think in careful, in my interpretation of carefully reading the ordinance, it seems like we do have that window for what is reasonable with the two-year window to do what is complete. I liked that there was the range in what, what complete meant, because like, I was thinking about roads, where I was like, if you repay those and you're trying to put sidewalks on, it's going to be just not feasible, right? Like widening the road, or putting a sidewalk in front of somebody's house, and we've all seen how people can react when you put sidewalk-related things in front of their houses. So I was just thinking about, right, like what, what does complete mean, does it necessarily mandate a sidewalk everywhere? So I, I think this strikes the balance between doing what's best practice and what's reasonable, but I also hear the staff concerns, that should this lie exclusively with council? Mike, I think your departments, and Sam, your departments' input should definitely be included in that decision-making, and maybe it is, you know, to Carla's point, bringing it into public discussion, so we have that conversation in addition to Mike, Sam, and Optab. So I'm interested to see what else comes up from council comment, but that's generally where I, I'm fence-adjacent still with this, but I, I think there's, there's wiggle room between best practice and reasonable here.
Okay, thank you.
I see this as a yes and, like I do with most of the things, because I feel that we're all agreeing that we think this is important, but the hesitation is, I feel, as we've been on council for eight years, has always been to put it on paper, whether that's from the city ourselves, or from asking various businesses or entities to put things in writing, because we might be nervous about actually having to follow through. So, I think I agree with what Carla had said, and I'm so sorry, I forgot your name already.
TJ.
AJ Malloy. Yes, thank you. I'm so sorry you have to go through with that, that's like unacceptable, on a daily basis, so, or more than a daily basis, maybe every few hours. So, I think that, I see this as, we all agree, I think that the onus of burden should be on why would we not have a sidewalk, instead of having to fight for every single one? So I see it as we're all on the same page, and we're putting it as an agreement, that this is what we believe in, and make, always understanding that there will be exceptions to the rule, but saying that, yes, we believe in this, and this is important to us, and then having to explain why are we deviating from that plan in certain situations.
Okay. I'll go at the end.
Okay. I know there was, there's a resolution that's not on the agenda tonight, and there was some conversation about possibly teaming together to create something, I don't know if that's off the table, or something that, that can't happen. I'm wondering, do you see this resolution, is it, are they mutually exclusive?
No, I mean, I, I could speak to staff, I think there was a lot of overlap, Sam and I were coming to the same place from different directions, mine focused on the sidewalk, but ultimately, at the core of both of them, is do we have a process of, as Councilor Raghu talks about, of exemption, like where we have a conscious conversation about exemption, and that's basically, I would defer to Sam on his resolution, but that was focusing more on the procedural side, which I think is implied in the resolution I drafted, but I would defer to Sam on, on what he was thinking.
Because you mentioned something about procedure and then substance.
Yeah.
And I'd like to hear about that.
Yeah, thanks for asking about that. So the procedural aspect, when Optab was talking about, you know, when is the, when is there an opportunity for the public to weigh in, and I think that's kind of what Alex and Mike were maybe asking about a little bit too, is, you know, if, if, if there's a prioritization done, and having sidewalks on every street is maybe a little bit of a oversimplification of how to make streets safer, that's one method to do that. But when the staff reviews where the streets are getting repaved, and this year, we really did take a lot of extra time to look at those and establish some criteria in saying, what are the different ways that these streets can be improved? And while that didn't make it, and this is one thing that I shared with Optab, is, we wouldn't be able to do that this year because of the capital budget art being set, possibly for a future year we could, but of course, that would take council direction, and it would also add more time to the overall process. So, an idea that Optab floated was really just looking at the policy and kind of reinterpreting the policy, was to clarify that there needed to be a, a public discussion about when something, when an improvement is exempted, and so that way, someone can comment on that. And while I didn't completely think that that was the intent of the policy, I could see where Optab is looking for, where is there going to be an opportunity for input? Another way to do that... Another way to do that, and so that resolution didn't make it onto the agenda, but I think that through the discussions that Mayor and City Manager were having, felt like, let's just go with the one that kind of included the other things as well, which is what ended up on your agenda. But some of the questions that I've heard tonight about prioritization, like Mike is asking, that would be helpful if Optab could complete that because then, when staff is looking at, okay, these are the streets in the worst condition that need to be paved, and this is the amount of money that it's probably going to take in next year's budget to do that. If there's, if some of those high-priority sidewalks that were already determined are, happen to be on the streets that are in the worst condition, there could be, those could potentially be included. Now, there are other trade-offs. There are loss of front yards and landscaping and trees and other things. And that could be, and this is some of the debate that has happened on Optab, is how do we kind of get that decision to be made? You know, is that a petitioning process for the neighborhood to kind of get some buy-in for themselves? You know, do we want to have that trade-off or not? Or should it just, should it just happen over a certain time period? Should the property owners be assessed? Is a sidewalk really necessary? Maybe there's other types of things that could make that street safer. So that's kind of the background as to, as to why the agenda ended up the way it did. So, but we think we've improved a lot over, in the recent years, on taking a harder look. And not everything has the label "complete streets" when we're doing these improvements. Sometimes they're capital improvement plan, matching funds for grants for projects that we have been doing. And it may not have the name "complete streets," but that's essentially what's happening. So I think that's what Optab has been looking for, is, is there a way to improve the public input process beyond just themselves? And I hope that summarizes on behalf of Optab kind of the history of that.
And do you think this would do that, or this resolution?
I think that this could, the way it's written, would actually restrict it because it's tied to the resurfacing. So I think the innovation, the creativity that staff have, when they see a funding opportunity coming up, maybe it doesn't have anything to do with street resurfacing, like for example, the Locust Street improvements you may have seen there in front of the Duke Substation wasn't part of a street resurfacing, but something that we knew the public had requested is in high demand. You can see the go-path, as it were, along the side of the road. And so, but even if you decide not to move this resolution forward, we can continue to come up with ways that can get public input on potential improvements and present you the options through Mike's leadership with the Service Department of, you know, there's only so much money to spend and here's what we would recommend, and it's really up to you in next year's budget, not the current year's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it.
Actually, can I keep Sam up there?
Yeah, you keep him up there.
So the staff version of this, did it get or could it get staff approval? Like, is there some way to put both together and a win-win for everybody? Does that make sense?
You're talking about the two resolutions.
The two resolutions, because you went to build one on behalf of David. But that doesn't necessarily mean staff would approve the version because you were doing it on behalf of David. Does that make sense?
Well, it was all of Optab, but yes.
He was doing it for Optab.
Yes, I think there could be a consolidation. I don't know how much weight a resolution carries in the sense of, you know, council still needs to vote on the budget. And the resolution intent is there, but if it finds that, you know, there's more or less amount of money, then maybe that resolution is there for inspiration only and not necessarily binding.
My next question would be, because a lot of this comes down to budget constraints, but you've also mentioned a couple other things about efficiency of actually implementing this. But if the same resolution came up a year from now and you had time to prepare for it as a staff, would approval change from not approving to approving? I know that's hard to judge, but if you had preparation for fixing some of the disagreements and preparing budgetarily for it, would it change staff's opinion?
Yeah, I think it would. Yeah, with more preparation, I think, and I think the, the sort of the rush feeling that you're maybe feeling right now is as a result of the recent improvements. And, and so I think probably preparing for next year, there could, we could look into ways to make public input in a way that's more efficient than you all listening to everyone in the neighborhood come up, you know, one by one and give their comments. Where kind of like Mike, what Mike was alluding to is, you know, some type of a preliminary scoring to where some of that work is already done, where we're looking at crash data, we're looking at public complaints, we're looking at speeds of vehicles and weighing all of that in well in advance of the budgeting process.
Yeah, that's great. I also thought a prioritization list would be super important here that already incorporated that stuff. I think that's all my questions for you. My general opinion is, there's nobody who's not for this generally. I think everybody on here, like, really cares about complete streets. I think the only question comes into budgetary alignment, like, right now, and then prioritization of goals. Because I know I've already overloaded staff with the goals that I care about that have some budget and also staff limitations. I really care about getting solar on the landfill and not just a little, but getting the full five megawatts. I really care about getting those flares done on the landfill because results per dollar are incredible for environmental improvement there. All the issues I have on housing, which are numerous, and so this is important to me, but I'd probably rank it like four or five. And if the difference between this causing problems and staff disagreeing with it is just holding off an amount of time or working out some small things in how we write up the resolution, then I'd prefer to like wait and resolve that, then move right now. Because otherwise, if you throw this out as a general idea, I think you get unanimous agreement with it. But if you put it out quickly, there's some staff resistance, some concerns about a bunch of questions, I think we'll probably have a pretty divided vote.
Why don't I give my comments and then you can respond?
Okay.
To all of them. First of all, I wanted to state my commitment to complete streets. And if you go back into the history, and probably Mike's the only one who would remember most of the way back, but every time a subdivision has come up, I have pushed hard for, and in fact, I introduced the legislation which required that sidewalks be on new subdivisions. So I believe in that. It is ironic that in 1990, when I was not on council, subdivision was approved, which we moved into, and it did not have sidewalks. And that's Hidden Creek subdivision does not have sidewalks. Then we moved to Ridge Avenue, which does not have sidewalks. Do I wish that there were sidewalks? Yeah, I definitely do. And like I said, I'm absolutely committed to the complete streets policy. But I do think a couple of other things are important to recognize. One is that you can read this resolution and come to the conclusion that, oh my gosh, Oxford isn't doing anything for sidewalks. They're not doing anything for pedestrians. They're ignoring everybody on bicycles. And I don't think that that is, in fact, the case. I think what is the case is that we have a very limited budget. I was part of a council that put something forward for a quarter percent income tax increase so that we would continue to keep up our streets. And so what it's boiled down to now is it's about $600,000. A later resolution that gets more specific wants 20% of that to go to complete streets. So that would mean that we're now down to $480,000 left for streets. Now, to me, I think that there are a lot of streets that need help. And I don't know, would it be Southern Knolls that didn't get their street? Would it be, you know, whose street wouldn't have gotten done this year if we had gone that route previously? The other thing is that I don't know that the need for a particular sidewalk necessarily coincides with the need to repave it. So in other words, there are some streets that really probably need to have sidewalks or other improvements. And that can be judged separately from judging what street is in the worst shape and has potholes and needs to be repaved. So tying them together is not, in my mind, necessarily the best way to go. So it's not the case that we're not doing anything, and we do have a commitment to it. And the important thing probably is that council does vote on the budget every single year. And so if we look at the budget and its limitations, and we say, you know, we really need sidewalks on Ridge Avenue, which by the way, I don't think the neighbors that I once had have been polled on whether they want a sidewalk, but nevertheless, so if Ridge Avenue, we want to have a sidewalk on that, then argue for it in the budget and say, this is a bigger priority than Optab gave us and their other priority, and we're paving the road, then this is a good time to do it. But the fact is that we haven't had those discussions. We haven't brought them up. No one from Optab or on council has said, we need to carve out something for sidewalk on Ridge Avenue. It just never happened. It never came up until today, until now. So, hey, are we committed to complete streets? I think that is a unanimous yes. Everybody is. We, in the preamble to this resolution, it's pointed out several times when we have recommitted our commitment to complete streets. So I guess my question is, is this needed? A recommitment to something we've recommitted to repeatedly, and everybody's in favor of, do we need to do that again? If, in fact, it's not really about recommitting, but it's about saying, hey, we need to, every time we do a street, we need to put in a sidewalk there, I'm opposed to that because that may not be the sidewalk that is most needed. Look at the sidewalks we've gotten this year on Locust Street. In two different places, we've put in sidewalks. The last thing is, when you're talking about someplace like Ridge, who's going to pay for that sidewalk? I guess the implication is that the city would pay for that sidewalk. I can ask, maybe staff will know, what the cost of that sidewalk roughly would be?
Let me just comment. You know, there's this notion of equity. The streets that we did this year, we had some, many sidewalks there that needed to be repaired.
Right.
And we assessed those property owners to the tune of about $200,000. So they paid for these improvements to the sidewalks. Now, David and I talked about this resolution, and there's this notion of equity. So I think if we're going to put the sidewalks in where they didn't exist, where people bought homes, where the developer did not have the cost of putting a sidewalk in, we need to assess those property owners. And maybe we even think about, since that's going to be a big load, because it's much more expensive to put a brand-new sidewalk in than to repair an existing sidewalk, because you typically don't have to replace every section of curb and sidewalk. But maybe what we do is look at assessing them half the cost so they have some cost, you know? Because it's really not fair to people that are buying new homes that...
They have to pay for that.
They have to pay for their sidewalk, or if you already have one and you have to improve it because we resurfaced it and it need to be repaired. So, you know, we have this notion of equity. And I know I would be upset if I lived on Fieldcrest, because we had, I think, one lady that had an assessment of over $3,000. And now we're going to put in a brand-new sidewalk on Ridge Avenue at no expense to the property owners? That doesn't make sense. I don't think that's fair.
I guess I started thinking about, well, here's option A. The city pays for those sidewalks.
Yes.
Do we pay for everybody's sidewalk? So if we repave Hidden Creek and Deer Trail, where homes are going for about double or triple what they go for on Ridge, are we going to assess them or are we going to pay for them?
Yeah.
And if I lived on, I'm not even going to talk Fieldcrest, if I lived on Deer Trail Circle and sidewalks had to be put in and the city said, yeah, everybody, everybody has to pay for it, I would say, hey, wait a minute, you did Ridge and you did these other streets without charging them. I don't want to have to pay for that, and I don't necessarily want it. I look at Ridge and I, people have put landscaping to great degrees all the way down to the curb. And so I, there are going to be some people there that are not too happy about it. I'm thinking if we do Stone, what is it, Stone Circle?
Stone Creek.
Stone Creek?
Yeah.
So if we do their street someday, we're automatically going to put in sidewalks? And are they going to pay for it? They can afford it, maybe better than the people on Ridge, but is that the measure that we're going to use, affordability? So I just think there are a lot of questions that haven't...
Yeah. Yeah, you know, and like Jason said, and you said, we're all in agreement. You know, it's just, we do have a limited budget and there's this notion of equity. And, you know, maybe what we need to do is work with O-Tab, Optab, excuse me, to prioritize and determine which streets and what gets done on those streets that they'd like to see done so that, you know, we can plan. I mean, we're going to continue to look for grants, but typically, they're for busy streets like Locust. They're not going to be for a street like Ridge or probably even Country Club Drive. But, you know, we have particular needs that we need to meet. And, you know, I'm glad TJ came tonight to share with us his experience, you know?
I am too, and I feel for him. And I didn't like walking, I had two small children who went over across by Dave's property and walked, and there's no sidewalks anywhere in that area along Contreras until you get to the other side of the street. So they also had to cross a fairly busy street to get to a sidewalk. You know, so I'm, I'm of two minds on it because on the one hand, I'm, I want sidewalks.
Yeah.
And you all have heard me when proposals have come up and they've said, well, here's our design. I go, well, where's the sidewalk? Oh, well, do we really need a sidewalk? Yes, you really need a sidewalk? No, you're not allowed to come speak right now. So, you know, you're not allowed to speak at this time, I'm sorry. You're interrupting council. I'm sorry. So anyway, those are some of my thoughts and some of the conundrums. But I do think that we have the process
Yes.
in place when we discuss our budget to make those priorities. Because if we are going to spend a lot of money to put in sidewalks, that money has to come from something else. Is it going to come from fewer streets? Is it going to come from some other project? And that's when we make those kinds of decisions, is in the budgetary meetings, which are coming up soon.
Can I ask a logistical question? So what is the cost? If you were to put in a sidewalk during repaving versus waiting till later and then putting it in, what is that cost difference?
I don't know that there's a huge difference.
No.
I mean, main thing, you probably want to wait. I mean, you don't want to resurface the street and then go in with construction equipment, build a sidewalk that does, you know, you might damage your new pavement. But as far as the cost goes, I can't imagine that it would be that much different.
Probably less if it's a brand-new subdivision.
Yeah, it'd be similar, as Mike said, yeah. But, you know, it's this notion like, you know, we have $600,000 that we're going to propose in the budget this year for, and asphalt has gone up over the years. And, you know, but, you know, that'll be council's decision. If you want us to spend half of that on a sidewalk, $300,000, and, you know, but we don't, we don't state the streets in the budget that comes a little later. You know, we're moving that date up. But, you know, I, I guess, as city manager, I'm bothered by, because I take a lot of these phone calls about these assessments. You know, why are you, well, we've always done it that way and it's your responsibility. And I just, you know, I know we've done a few sidewalks, like to Kramer, where the city paid, and I think we got a partial grant for that. And there were some others done before I got here to connect to the new community pool. But, you know, those had a public purpose. And, and I just, you know, I would just feel bad to take those phone calls and say, no, you have to repair yours at this expense, but we're going to... but we're going to put some new ones in over here. Later on, they'll have to repair them in another 20, 30 years.
Mike, did you want to comment?
Reminded of just a couple of points that we haven't discussed tonight. One was 2008, in the Great Recession, as city manager would call it, and we did not fund a street program that year. We saw a dramatic downturn in the maintenance of our streets, and I don't know that we ever recovered from missing that one year. And I think if we, we, our current budget is 600,000 for paving program, and if that's reduced significantly to pay for other projects, obviously, there'll be fewer and fewer streets resurfaced, and I think we'll be in a vicious cycle, a downward spiral of property values and customer satisfaction with the job that we're doing. People expect their trash to be picked up, they expect their streets to be nice, they expect their water and sewer to be of the best quality possible. The other issue I'm concerned about are opportunity costs. We're a full-service city. We don't just do, you know, one group does the streets. We run the water utility, the wastewater utility. It's very expensive to run these utilities, and there are opportunity costs for the city engineer, who has a staff of two people. And Scott Otto's done a great job at getting grants, knowing the opportunities to where we will score well, and we spend our time focused on where we will do well. He got 2.4 million for the water treatment plant design. We believe he has $4 million coming for the new softening plant. Jessica's done an outstanding job getting federal dollars for the Oaks Trail. All of this is an opportunity of limited resources, and that's our time. There's only so many hours in the day, and if council directs us to do sidewalk programs directly tied to resurfacing, we can do that. We can follow orders. But look at the opportunity costs that we may or may not have time to focus on all these other issues. That's my concern. It wasn't that long ago, there were no sidewalks on State Route 73 going to Denver Field. North 27 was a two-lane cow path going up to Walmart. It was a travesty. There were people leaving the trailer park, trying to wheel baby strollers on gravel shoulders.
Yep.
All of that's been corrected. Talawanda's built a new high school. There were no sidewalks to that. The 27 South's been widened with bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides. We've installed sidewalk on Fairfield to the Community Park and Aquatic Center.
732.
We've done it on Contreras, going out to the Knolls. There are improvements, and again, we fund those, and we strike where we can be effective. And that's how we work on South Locust Street this year. In fact, I had a note from trustee Pennock from Oxford Township, just extremely appreciative that the city finally filled in that ditch and that safety hazard. She felt there was always going to be cars going into that ditch, and the safety issues with the substation. I just wanted to make those points and make sure council was aware.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry. And I guess I'm thinking about the, because I totally get the evidence base why we would decide where we want to put, prioritize the limited resources for sidewalks. I think the challenge would be, there's probably, the bias is probably that there are less pedestrians and bikers because there are no sidewalks along Ridge. So I think that might be a little bit complicated, as far as people might be less inclined to go that route because they don't have the avenue to do so, just bearing that in mind. But then, I guess my question for you would be, because it is hard if there, if it's not more expensive to put a sidewalk in later, but I feel like the impetus for this is a little bit, the push and pull with the systematic difficulty with the budget, and there's a lot of things that look really good on paper, but don't reflect, I mean, housing, like there's a lot of things that haven't happened, so I understand the push for it. So bearing all that in mind, like, how much of it is that versus how much of it is Ridge, knowing that our numbers probably are a little bit skewed because we're not having the most pedestrians and bikers?
I don't know if it's a question for Mike or for me.
I would, I would recommend that sidewalk projects stand on their own merit and be evaluated on their own merit, because it's not just plopping down some concrete and calling it a day. You have to make sure that there's significant or adequate right-of-way. There might be property acquisition that's needed. We have many neighborhoods where there are healthy, mature trees that the neighbors do not want to lose those trees. I've had several people comment on that. I think the projects should stand on their own, so they can be designed and engineered properly, so that if there are water issues, they, that can be resolved at the same time. There's a lot of considerations, more so than just, you know, pouring slides of cement.
And I feel like this is an important exercise, especially since we have prospective candidates in the audience, that the, that this has been going on for a long time. I mean, there's a lot of votes that are typically unanimous, like, yes, yes, whatever staff tells us to do. So I understand, and I respect David so much, I understand what he's trying to do, and I think that the concern is that we really need to put our money where our mouth is. We really need to say, complete streets, and I know we're trying, I know we are, but I understand the boiling point, David, for, especially for streets, and that boiling point for housing, or honestly, just like feeling really dejected about feeling like, okay, it's either something is redundant, so there's no need to do it, something can't be enforceable, something, it's the same three reasons why we shouldn't introduce any legislature. And so I think in this situation, from a systemic perspective, I am so with you, it is a little bit hard with the, if the repaving is not, or if it's not cheaper to do it when it's repaving, I'm like, okay, that part is a little bit tricky, but I also feel for TJ. So, but I, it's hard to argue with the numbers, understanding, as far as like, what is the safety priorities, but understanding that there probably is some bias there because it's not safe for pedestrians and bikers.
So if I, if I may, I'm glad I asked this conversation, because it was extraordinarily revealing. And, and I won't go through all the history. I've been trying to advocate for bike and pedestrian safety in this community for as long as I've been here. And there's a reason why we adopted a policy, because it's not easy, and there are lots of good reasons for not doing expensive, controversial things. Every time, there was a conversation about a bike lane, what about the on-street parking? What about the, you know, there's so many, it's always costly, and it's always a trade-off. And so this is why council adopted a complete streets policy, and, and I, it's good, because it's revealed some fundamental misunderstandings about what the policy is for, how it should work. It's a relatively straightforward thing that operates in hundreds, thousands of cities across the United States have these. And, and, and so, coming back to Amber's point, a lot of conversation going all over the place, but it boils down to two very straightforward things. One is when an elected body adopts a piece of legislation that is meant to distill its priorities and implement those through the administration, there's always a tension there between our goals and, and what happens, but the complete streets policy is meant to hold our feet to the fire. Our comprehensive plans have always talked about bicycle paths, they've always talked about trails, they've always talked about bikes and pedestrian, and when I moved here, many of those things weren't here. We have made many of those things, but, but it's taken a dogged commitment and a commitment for our plans and policies, because the plan can say one thing, but when you repave the street, do you do it in accordance with the plan or not? The complete streets policy, so at one level, it's a commitment to a policy mechanism that's relatively straightforward. It says, if you're going to pave the street, it's not limited to that, like, you don't, but it says, any project that you're going to do on a street, you just have to assess it, is it going to serve all users of all ages and abilities? It's a basic kind of categorical standard, I'll talk about that in a minute. But the procedure is, is, no, it doesn't say bike lanes up every street, it doesn't say sidewalks on every street, it says redesign the street to serve those users according to the design best standards, which are pretty, I mean, Scott knows how to use an, he's got the pedestrian manual that he can pull off the shelf, and, and if you look at that pedestrian manual, it will say that sidewalks are desirable on both sides, but can be on one side, and there's room for engineering judgment. So none of it is, is categorical about what the solution is. It's a categorical commitment to make the safety accommodation. And, and so that's what, and, and we have an Optab, which is a body that can have, have those conversations. And, I'm sorry, I was, steam was coming out of my ears that I introduced this late. We have been trying on Optab, begging for the repaving schedule prior to the budget schedule, so we can, so we can think proactively about which streets are coming up, are there going to be issues, should the city budget for those? We, we, you got this recommendation in December, because the street repaving schedule came to us in December after the budget had already, so we were like, well, what about, and so we have been trying so hard to create a process that is synced to the budget cycle. I could have told you Ridge was coming up for repaving, it was crumbling. If we know it's coming, and we know it doesn't have sidewalks, let's think proactively about how to solve the problem, and, and Optab stands ready to do that. I, I think that, so, so that's part of it, and pardon me for my frustration, but we've been trying to make this work smoothly for as long as Optab has been aboard, and it's difficult. And we recognize that there are trade-offs, and, and staff recognizes that there are trade-offs, and so it's never easy, because there's always a trade-off. But the question is, if we all put our heads together, if we have a board, and we have staff, and we have open conversations, what would be the best way to solve this? Like, we can have a conversation, we can say, based on the traffic counts, we don't need it. But what happens is, an Optab make recommendations, and there were communications, and it was silence, and then the streets were retaped, and they didn't have the facilities. And so you're mad at me for playing catch-up. You know, I'm just asking the question of, what about our policy? And, and are we going to apply it or not? Because I'm going to go off council, and maybe next year, you guys will have a Hawkeye to know that, oh, these streets are going to be repaved, we're going to apply it, but, so that's all procedural. We have a great policy, it's not that hard to understand how it could work if we trusted the process. But categorically, I love all the conversation, but let's boil down to it, is, is asking TJ to walk in the street, do we believe a, a street that serves, how, how many streets, how many houses do you think are back on Old Farm? Forty?
At least.
A, a, a street that serves 40 to 50 homes, it's the only outlet to the sidewalk for a child who wants to ride to school or walk to school, or a person who's in a wheelchair has to walk in the street for three blocks, look at, at TJ, or look at anyone else and call it complete? Okay, that's fine, you know, but show me the engineering standards. Show me that the engineering standard says, no, this isn't required, not a gut feeling about, what about all these streets? I was, I was walking on Ridge, and I was, a neighbor of mine, Ridge does not have sidewalks, I walk on Ridge, I'm an able-bodied adult. But there are kids who live on Ridge who tried to run to the bus stop. So this is the compounding thing, like, so I was watching two kids who I know, a friend who lives on Ridge, and they were coming home from the country club, and they were trying to cross Contreras, and it was hard, there was a lot of traffic. And why was it hard to cross Contreras? Because there's no crosswalk at Ridge. Why not? Because there's no sidewalk. If there's no sidewalk, there's no crosswalk. So you have neither, so the kids just had to run with it, and then later, I walked around my walk, and, and there were kids walking in Ridge, and then there was a car coming, and they didn't know which way to go. I don't know what the best solution is, but, so again, ultimates, but A, are we committed to a policy that the mechanics exist to do the best thing possible? And, and we do it at the stage of restate paving, because that's when we do stuff in streets, like, that's when we restripe them, that's the way it works. Do, do we really think the policy's so broken, or are we just not really committed to it, and we need to give it a better chance? We need to give Optab a chance to do its job? Staff recommended sidewalks in Ridge, can we give staff a, a chance to do their jobs? So that's the first commitment. Are we committed to policy, or are we, it's complicated, and maybe we'll get to it. And the second part is just, do, are we really committed to the principle? Like, can we call a street like Old Farm complete and, and leave it? Old Farm's been incomplete for how many years? When was that subdivision built, Mike?
Probably in the 60s.
67?
I'm not saying that we can't have a sidewalk prioritization, I can't, bike and pedestrian plan, I'm involved in all that stuff. Like, I know what we're doing, but the fact is, if we don't do it as part of the repaving, what's the likelihood we'll go back in? And how much longer will someone like TJ have to walk in the street in the neighborhood? So to me, it's relatively simple. We have a policy commitment to, 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 to the policy that I'm not introducing, it was adopted in 2019, it was reaffirmed, are we committed to it or not? And are we committed to the principle or not? So to me, it's relatively straightforward. I'm not saying it's, it's easy, it's not going to cost money, it's going to require trade-offs, but we have to ask the question, or do we just not do it? So that's me, I'll, I'll stop with that.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
You may.
The, so what has been the funding for the roads where they get new sidewalks? The owner pays, the property owner pays?
When we were, at, yeah.
Not, yeah, what add, not replace?
Repair, if we repair them, we assess the property owner, the full cost of it.
Have we had street, what about the, did the property owners across from me on Locust have to pay for those sidewalks, or the city paid for that?
I think, did we get a grant for that?
Going to Kramer, those grants.
Yeah, we got a grant for that.
A grant for that.
But they did not have to pay for that.
I think most of the first installs have been city-paid for, like, up Contreras, where it was paid, or by the city, Fairfield was paid.
I mean, let me just make it easy for you, because we had Country Club on our list to repay, but we didn't have enough money when the bids came in, so we dropped that one. But what I'm going to suggest to you in the budget is, we're going to have that in the repaving this year, and we need to special assess those property owners. Now, if you want to do it 100% or 50%, if we do it 50%, you know, it'll have to come out of the, the repaving. But, you know, I think we have a compelling reason to do it. I can't imagine there'll be too many property owners coming in and saying, TJ, that's too bad, you know, walk in the street. But, you know, we have mature trees there, and it's not going to be inexpensive. But, you know, that'll be the first hurdle, I mean, we'll, we'll experience that together.
And this policy gives, as Optab did, and from a conversation with staff, like, hey, we don't, maybe don't have money this year, but let's try to find some budget dollars. That's why it's a two-year commitment. Let's try to figure out how to pay for it. It's just a commitment to figure out how to do it, is really...
Well, I mean, we got to, we either do it or we don't. So...
And do we know how, let's say, funding mechanism, if this isn't high priority, and say, all the property owners really want it, is there a way to say, okay, this, these streets are a priority, so the city is paying for it, these other streets are not, but if a property owner is willing to pay, just for example, if all of them say, yes, we really want it, and they'd be willing to pay for 50% of it?
Oh, sure, yeah, but I can't imagine...
But would that change?
I've never done anything where we had 100% agreements.
I know, I know. But would that change things if the property owners were willing to...
Oh, sure, if they came to us with a petition, yeah, we would move forward with that.
Do we know how they feel, or I guess the property owners would probably assume...
So you're talking about a petition for us to assess them?
For a sidewalk.
Yeah, for a sidewalk, and then, I don't know.
We have to figure out how to pay for it. It's not uncomplicated, but it's not, it's not going to get simpler by not tackling it. You just need to give yourself some time to figure it out, and that's basically, two years is enough time to seek grant funding, to talk to neighbors, to design it.
She's got the floor, I want it.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, no, so I would be curious to see, do we know if the owners would be willing to do, and I know it's, it's all about how you frame the question, right? Like, do you want to pay X, like, what would that be? Like, how much would...
Well, we'll develop a cost estimate for it.
Because I just don't, like, I, I don't want to, I don't want to crap on this, because I understand what you're trying to do, and I feel your frustration, and I just wonder if there's some way we can figure this out, and then abide by our policy, we all say we agree on this, and if the owners, if there is some type of funding mechanism that works that makes that burden less?
I doubt it.
And if we find that it's financially infeasible, there's a mechanism for that. I mean, that's what's wonderful thing about the policy, if the, if the cost vastly outweighs the demand, if they're topographical, but we just make, as per your point, you make a conscious choice to, we can't, you know, but it's a conscious decision as opposed to a...
And I think the other, sorry, last, last name, I promise.
I'm just the mayor.
The last thing I would...
I have no control over this at all.
The last thing I would say, when my husband was hit on the bike path by a car, there was no signage, the trees were covering the pathway, the, the driver just hit him. It was pretty bad. We're really lucky he did not, like, get seriously injured or die, but it was pretty bad. And so I think things like that is so frustrating that we have to wait for someone to get hurt or die, and I think, I'm very nervous, I mean, TJ, and I really want to know your dog's name, too, but, but, Dusty?
Dusty.
I mean, I, y'all, I'm sure, I know y'all are capable, I know you do this all the time, but do we need to wait for that statistic to happen before saying this is a priority? So I just wonder, is there some way to figure this out? So I just wonder, is there some way to figure this out? Because I, we can, we can anticipate bad things happening, and so let's try to be proactive instead of wait for someone to get hit by a car.
Yeah, I think, you know, Country Club and Old Farm is a good example, where the need may be greater there than it is, and whatever the streets that are going to get repaved next year are.
Prioritization list.
Yes, that is a marvelous lead-in to my question, which is, I have no qualms with the spirit of this, mine is a process issue. So I do think tying this to the repaving schedule does a disservice to the sidewalks, because the rate that streets crumble is like, I am speaking so far out of my expertise, is probably different than the rate that sidewalks crumble. So my recommendation for this policy, and I think maybe some chance for staff alignment here, is to think about, and I know strategic plans cost also a bunch of money, but I would like to see something that's more akin to a strategic plan, that takes the sidewalks on their own merit and need, instead of tying them directly to the streets. And then we could do kind of a triage, right? And that triage could take factors into state of disrepair, rate of pedestrian traffic, rate of bike traffic, cost of what's needed to be complete, is it going to be traffic calming, is it a pedestrian sign, is it a total add of a sidewalk? So it gives a little bit more freedom to best align what we can actually do to move forward with what is of greatest need right now, and I think we keep that two-year clock, so that way there's time to find that funding, right? So let's say we have two streets with sidewalks, one needs a shared, shared street pedestrian sign, and then one needs a total overhaul. For the one that needs the shared street sign, we can do that now, because it's in the budget, and then the two, like, the two-year clock starts on the one that needs a whole sidewalk overhaul. So I think that, thank you for bringing it forward, this is a really robust discussion. But for me, I think I found where I'm at on the fence, and I think I am on the no side of the fence, but only because I think that there is a better process that serves the need more than what this resolution does. So that's where I'm at.
I also want to thank Dave for bringing this forward. I mean, it sounds like I'm totally against it.
Well, I'll see if you guys do it in my absence. I mean, we'll see if the sidewalk comes to be in my absence.
I was trying to see.
I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. I do apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I wanted to thank you for bringing this forward, and I think it's a good discussion for us to have. I think the one thing that has come out of the discussion that I agree with Alex on is that we will depend on OPTAB to be looking at what are the highest needs in the city, and then we'll figure out a way to carve out in the budget. I don't want to take it out of paving, because I don't want to reduce the number of streets for the very reason that Mike talked about. Once you get off of doing those streets, then more are in decrepit position, and that's exactly what we found ourselves in when we did the quarter percent income tax. So I think it's good to remember it. I don't know that this resolution is, is going to be passed, but it doesn't negate the fact that it's important. And I fought my entire career as a counselor for sidewalks and for complete streets, so I believe in it, and I thank you for bringing it forward.
And if I can make one clarifying comment, to be clear, I don't want to wait until November to revisit this, David. If you would like to propose another resolu, like, let's.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a complete streets, to be honest. I think you guys are going to have to decide whether or not you're truly committed or not, because the policy's relatively clear. I'm not introducing anything new, I'm restating the policy as exists, and all the flexibility that I've talked about is, is there to do this. If we decide to give ourselves wiggle room, street by street, we will continue to make great progress. It's, but I would just say that, I don't want to introduce the legislation to repeal the complete streets process, but it's pretty straightforward about whether we're committed to it or not. And that's what this resolution's basically about, are we committed to it or not? There, it's not an either or, there are other things we can do, and we're doing all that. Bike and pedestrian plan, we're going to do all that. So I'm sorry, I'm talking too much.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, so, thank you.
I was just going to say, I concur almost completely with your last two comments, and I understand where David's at, if he doesn't want to put out legislation. I don't mind us putting out legislation that matches that.
I'd be happy to partner on it, yep.
And does this, same goals, just a slightly different.
Great, happy to carry the mantle, David.
Are we ready to vote on this resolution?
Yes.
I think we've had a lot of discussion. And so I will ask all those in favor of the resolution to indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
Nay.
Okay, the resolution's not adopted, it will move to the second one, and you can read it, please.
A resolution accepting the recommendation of the Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board to create a budget line titled Complete Streets Improvements.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded.
Same topic, different resolution. Yeah. So this one was a recommendation from, from OPTAB, going back several months as well, to, I think, give some public visibility in the, in the budget, to ensure, just like what some, some of you just discussed about making sure that complete streets would have its own pot of money, if you will, so that, moving forward. And the way I would envision the, the request or recommendation from Parking and Transportation is that essentially the relabeling of what's already pedestrian safety funding in the budget, and increasing that amount, is what the recommendation is from OPTAB for that, to twenty percent of whatever the resurfacing. And really, that comes from studies that have come out recently, and public feedback in the, in the process of doing the bicycle pedestrian master plan that was mentioned tonight. The, the amount of public input that users are in demand and in need of is about twenty percent, just coincidentally, so that's where that number came from, of the overall transportation sector. Okay, I don't know, City Manager Elliot has anything to add to that?
Do you have anything to add before I go to the public?
Yeah. Country Club was on the repaving list, we dropped it, like I said, because we didn't have enough money. And so I'm going to include it on our list of streets to be repaved this year, and I'll get a cost estimate for the sidewalks. We have two hundred thousand, that will be in the budget for special assessments, and I would propose that we assess those property owners a hundred percent. Council can decide if they want to cut it to fifty percent, and I would propose that we would then take that money out of the street resurfacing. So, you know, we've got to make some decisions, and we only have so much money, we have to live within our budget. And, but, you know, I think we have a good reason to want to do Country Club Lane.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution?
Yeah, this is Lee, this is what you were.
Again, Lee Fisher, eighty-eight, Whitetail Run, member of the Parking and Transportation Board. You have before you what I think is a fairly easy administrative decision, and that is to create a budget line item for the Parking and Transportation Board. I've been appreciative of being appointed, but this issue came up a couple of months ago, and I might have raised the issue, do we have a budget line item? The answer is no. Why don't we have a budget line item? Well, it's never been done. So at this point, no need to, in my opinion, no need to talk about money, but creating that budget line item allows the committee some leeway for future funding to flow in there that happens to be separate from paving. There are dozens of ancillary services surrounding parking and transportation, other than paving. And that, so I think it's a pretty straightforward budget reset accounting position to do that, and I appreciate your concurrence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address this? Carla, welcome back.
I think, I think Lee represented the opinion of our Parking and Transportation Board pretty well. And I, I think that, I appreciate the very detailed last discussion that you all had. I think I just want to reiterate, I think that sidewalk assessment, sidewalks are one of the main ways that people in our city interact with government. There's a lot of opportunities to do that process right, and to seek input in advance of how that process is going to go, so it doesn't feel arbitrary when it comes people's way. There's opportunities to give notice, there's opportunities, and I'm grateful we have a reporter here today to make sure this kind of thing ends up in the press as a discussion. And I just want to say, you know, I think that, I think this is worth investing in, but we have to change our modality a little bit. We work very efficiently in the city, we're very interested in, and I have so much appreciation for the incredible way that our service department is able to leverage each dollar into incredible results. And so that, a lot of that happens because they move quickly. And sometimes public process is the, is a slowing down effect, and you don't totally want to see that. But I think it's worth it to invest a little more in how we do the approach, and to ensure that we do have a process by which if we're not going to be completing streets, we tell people, we're not going to complete this street, you know? If you think this street should be completed, if you can think of a good reason why, you know, let's, let's talk about it. So I would like to see, I would like to see an intentionality in a process brought to all of our, our complete streets and our sidewalk conversations, so it's not just like, surprise, like, you get this assessment in the mail, and it gets people's ire up. It would be better if there was something where we talked about, you know, had a forum for people to discuss what they could gain from some of these things versus having this arbitrary thing come down. That is, that is more relevant to the last item than to this one, but I think that they're connected in the sense that we really, I think, would benefit from taking this action and having this line item, and I hope that you will consider it.
Thank you, Carla, appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wants to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Counselors, questions, comments?
So I have a question for staff, because we currently have the paving program, which is effectively an automobile program, you know, six hundred thousand dollars. But then, we do currently have a bike and pedestrian safety fund that we advocated years ago, that's fifty thousand.
Lot of fun, the line item.
A line item. So how does this relate to that? Is that relabeling that? Is that a new additional?
I'd have to give it some thought. I mean, you know, we also have the two hundred thousand dollars in the special assessment fund. You know, and what that does is, property owners have the opportunity to pay for the expense themselves. Many did this year, and if they don't, then we bid it out, hire a contractor, we pay for it, and then they pay an assessment over a five-year period, and I believe the interest is five percent. Many select that. So, I mean, we have that in there, and as I told you, I, I want to, this year, recommend that we do Country Club Drive, and that we assess the property owners. So we do have those three things.
Dave's, I think Dave's question is, is that the same fund, or would this be an additional line item?
Well, that's up to council. I mean, if you want to call that something else, we can, but, you know.
I think, I guess partly, I mean, two different strategies here. One is that the repaving program just kind of presumes, we're talking about automobile improvements, we're making roadway smoother for cars. And then we do have a separate bike and pedestrian, there are a couple of different ways to go about it, could be an additional fund, but then it's like, is there additional money? The core question, and it's in the whereas's, is that the amount of money be proportional, you know? So anyway, that's, I guess that's my question, is partly it's about labeling, what's labeled and what, and then it's, the more important one is how much money's in it.
If I, if I could, just to clarify, although we call it a paving or resurfacing program, there are pedestrian and bike safety parts of that program.
Yeah.
We would put down new thermoplastic crosswalks.
Okay.
If there are sharrows warranted, that money would come from that fifty thousand dollar line item. If a rectangular rapid flash beacon is warranted, that money would come from that line item.
Okay, out of the fifty thousand?
Out of that fifty thousand.
So the pedestrian, the crosswalks on a repaving project are coming out of bike and pedestrian safety?
It, generally.
Or out of the pavement?
Generally, our contract has been, the bids have come back higher than the six hundred thousand allotted.
Okay.
So we've bundled the two line items. And bike and pedestrian safety is legitimately getting the service they're paying for, but it's bundled in one contract that the paving contractor has, and their subcontractor that does all the painting and the street markings will perform that work.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Counselors, any other comments? I mean, it seems to me that we want to have, I, I don't have a problem with having a line item myself. I think that that draws attention to it. I think, you know, what the amount is, sometimes will be less than twenty percent, and sometimes will be much greater than twenty percent if we decide to do a major project. And maybe then, if it's there on the budget, that will compel staff to ask the question, what streets are we talking about paving, so that if it works to do it together, they can do it together. But I think that would give us more flexibility. I don't want to tie a specific number. If, for example, we decide we want to do a five-megawatt solar project on the closed landfill, or put in flares, we may decide that that's more important than the particular streets, you know, street improvements. But I, I like having the line item there, that's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I support the line item, but also, we might not want a number, because not only for the other things we're doing that we might take, put in a higher priority, but also because we might have a system that just prioritizes, we always do the top three, right? And that top three might be really small, or might be really big. There's other ways to approach this than just giving it a number. But I at least want a line item, because, yeah, it stays in our memory, it hopefully keeps us.
It focuses during budget.
I guess the question for me is, is it proportional to the users? So I mean, what we learned from the bicycle pedestrian plan, that if you had twenty percent of our people, according to bicycle, is, are relying on walking as a primary form of transportation, then you add bikes to that. So the question is, does our funding reflect our usership, is the question, and currently it's, it's, you know, so I guess, how do we, a line item is great, but the question is, is it meaning, it has to be, to be meaningful, it needs to be proportional, but we start with a line item, I guess.
But also with that, and I, I agree with that, but also it would depend on the scale, right? If you went by a prioritization method, instead of just a flat number, over one year you might be under, over three years you might be over. But that's a good point.
And we already do a capital project, that's separate. These are just, this is the operating budget, like, this year there was five hundred thousand dollars spent on bicycle, you know, on crosswalks and stuff.
Okay, so this resolution is really quite simple. It's section one, Oxford City Council hereby directs the City Manager to title a budget line Complete Streets Improvement. So that could be CIP budget, it could be operating budget, it could be, so we're going to give that to the staff. Anyone else? Are you ready to vote? Let me get the frog out of my throat. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted. And that moves us finally to the third resolution.
A resolution accepting the recommendation of the Public Arts Commission for a mural installation on the Uptown Parking Garage.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On a very different topic, Ashley, could you actually take that off for just a second, and then I'll click it again, sorry? Or I could just click it. There we go, okay. I didn't want to have the grand reveal too soon. So the Public Art Commission, one of the council goals in January was for us to find a way to do a mural, and we kind of landed on doing a mural on the city uptown parking garage. And so we did a call for art, and boy, I mean, we were hoping for like twelve responses, and we had fifty-one, and they were amazing. And so PACO met and narrowed it down to three, who they then paid a stipend to really polish their design. So the initial, the first submission was like a pencil line drawing, and then these final three submissions were in full color, you know, shown on the garage as a rendering and that kind of stuff. So after discussion, they have selected.
You're missing the fun part, but.
That's their first
You were here for the other one.
After discussion, they did recommend Mas Murals Secret Level, and so I will, it will have a cost of, I have a correction to the staff report, the cost will be $19,869. We had budgeted $50,000, so it is about half of what we thought it was going to be. They will be installed on aluminum composite panels, so it'll be painted in the studio and then installed with a boom lift on the garage, so that it can be painted in the studio, repaired in a studio. And then, I think, we have, we asked for a lifetime of about 10 years, and then, you know, we can decide after that if we want to keep it or not, that kind of thing. And so I am going to show you the rendering.
This is the exciting part.
All right, now, let's see if that works, Ashley. Okay. So it's hard to get it all, here, let's see if I can zoom out just a little bit. Here we go. So it is a three-dimensional drawing that will look like an optical illusion of, you can see, it's like he, and wrote in his narrative that like, nature reclaims everything. So the idea is that, you know, nature reclaims even when we try to build things on it. And then the view, and this view is kind of what he calls the sweet spot, which is actually across the street behind Skyline. If, that's where you would see like this really three-dimensional look. But looking, coming up from like Buffalo Wild Wings, this is a view you would see, and then coming from Chipotle, this is the view that you would see. And so it would take about 10 to 12 weeks to implement, and I think that's the recommendation from PACO. I have, I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? This is more fun, isn't it, than the other? Yeah. All right. Counselors, questions or concerns? I think it looks really cool, so.
Is that a Red Hawk?
It's a Red Hawk, yeah.
It's a nod to Miami, yeah.
Yeah, it's a Red Hawk.
Well, this is my question to Mike, who's been trying to keep the top deck of the garage sealed for years, is this like a triggering thing to see like a waterfall? Crumpling bricks in a waterfall from the top of our parking garage?
Just a little jump scare every day.
Thank you to PACO and staff for administering those whole processes and giving us some cool art.
Thank you very much to Ashley and Jessica and Emily, what's her last name?
Emily Shoker.
Shoker, yeah, and all the PACO members. Yeah, it's very, it's very exciting. It's very exciting.
Who is the woman?
It's Jessica.
It's Jessica.
It looks like Renata.
Oh. He wrote a statement about like, it's a woman, she, it says her car has like an environmentalist license plate, and so she's like a curious citizen, like, ooh, is what he wrote in his statement.
Just an unnamed curious person, yes. All right, any other questions or comments? Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you. Resolution is adopted, and we have one first reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3783, supplemental budget ordinance number five, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2025.
Okay, and this is first reading, so we don't need motions. Heidi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. I'm bringing tonight some legislation for a supplemental for, to make adjustment to the budgeted revenue and appropriations for the quicker-than-expected development of Al's Landing. The permit revenue will, will exceed the budget, the budgeted revenue, as well as the, the cost for the inspections within IC. So we're asking to increase the revenue and increase the expense. We're also asking for $6,430 to the general fund to make adjustments to account for the emergency repair of the municipal building air conditioning unit. We had a couple of fun days of zero air conditioning at work. We also are asking for the $50,000 to make adjustments to the budgeted appropriations to account for the replacement of the failed air conditioning units at the courthouse, at this building, as well as the emergency replacement of the impound garage roof. The $50,000 that we originally had budgeted for the courthouse study was used to fund those two emergency projects, so we're just asking to replenish it so that we can continue the study for this year. We're also asking to use $50,000 of ARPA fund interest, and this would be for the addition of ADA audible access, accessible traffic signal improvements.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it, Heidi. And is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Because it's first reading for the public's information, this will come back at our next meeting, and then we'll have motions and seconds, and we'll get to argue about it again. All right, Counselors, any questions or concerns? Thank you, Heidi, we appreciate your diligence. That is all we have then for ordinances, and I will move then to announcements and communications, start with City Manager Doug Elliott.
So we provided counsel a copy of the 2026-2030 proposed capital improvement plan, and the plan will be reviewed with the City Council during a work session on Monday, September the 8th, 2025, at 6:30 PM here in this chamber. So I'll focus on capital improvements for the next year, fiscal year 2026. So the proposed CIP for 2026 is 18.3 million, with 16.5 million for construction projects and 1.8 million for equipment. General fund projects total just over 7 million, wastewater fund projects total 8.4 million, and the water fund project totals 647,000. Now, as you remember, we have in this year's budget the water softening project, which I'll talk a little bit about later. So keep in mind that even though we adopted that and we encumbered it, there's still a lot of work going on there. So of the general fund mount, 2.7 million is for the Amtrak rail platform, 1.6 million for the Oat from Fairfield to Contreras Roads, 915,000 for the Oat feasibility study, Contreras to Mary Day Park, and 650,000 for resurfacing and repairs. So the two O projects are contingent upon 100% ODOT grants. The Amtrak rail platform has an OKI grant of just over 2 million. The 2026 proposed capital equipment total is 1.8 million, with 805,000 for the general fund, and 608,500 for the fire EMS fund. So we will be reviewing that, as I said, on September the 8th. With the water softening plant, water treatment plant softening project, we're expecting soon to get the approval letter from the Ohio EPA. If so, then we would plan to let the project, hopefully by the end of September, we'll see. As you know, the current estimate of the project is 8.9 million, and I just want to remind the public that the city's Oxford, our water, has a hardness of 350 milligrams per liter, and hardness is measured by the amount of calcium carbonate in the water. So we will utilize, this project will utilize membrane softening, reverse osmosis, to achieve a hardness of between 120 to 140, so big improvement in our water quality. And the new treatment process, of course, when completed, will save customers the expense of buying and maintaining their own softening system. And then, of course, we're expecting, I believe, August the 22nd, that the county commissioners will be receiving their RFP for the relocation of Area 1 and Area 2 court, and we'll see what proposals they get, and we'll keep you posted on that. And as, as you know, you know, we signed a contract for Oat's Phase 5 with Brune Ball Construction, Inc., and they've begun the project, and this project will require two construction seasons, so that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Mike?
Can I?
Okay, TJ?
Just wanted to publicly thank Mayor Snavely for coming this past Friday to our police division meeting, where we have a department-wide meeting, where we come in and talk about the upcoming school year, and also as well as Assistant City Manager Green. It was nice to hear from both of them. We gave out some awards, we took our professional photos, but we really set the objectives for the year, talked about the upcoming year. So we, you know, one of the things we're trying to return to is a lot of order maintenance, a lot of visibility early on in the first part of the school year, and, you know, there's really not, the warning is your ticket you're going to get, you know, if, if you violate one of our ordinances. So expect that strong enforcement early on, because we simply do not have enough officers to go call to call to call. So if your noise is too loud, you're going to get a ticket. If you're carrying an open container, you're going to get a ticket. So that's the message we tried to send, but I know to the public sometimes it looks like there is no order and it's chaos. That's because there's only a few, you know, officers working at that time, and they just don't have the time to give out warnings for those type of violations. So we try to set the tone early, and, and our guys will do a, do a good job of that. But, you know, here in a few days, or, well, you're already seeing it, this town is being inundated, we're welcoming back the students
Repopulated.
Repopulating. And with, with all the U-Hauls and the, the parents in town, it does get a little chaotic, especially parking. So I know certain things annoy certain people, you know, maybe J-turns or yellow zone violations, decreased visibility at intersections, and we do do our best to enforce those. But if you have a problem, certainly call us. But again, thanks to Mayor Snavely for coming out and, and speaking to our police officers.
Thank you. Heidi?
I have a big thank you.
Chief DeFric. Okay, thank you. Chad?
Captain Parks tonight.
Okay, thank you. Nothing? Sam, okay, nothing for you, nothing for you, Sam? Okay. Mike?
Make good decisions. It's no fun to come back to school and the first weekend you get a citation or a trip to the emergency room or worse. So everybody have a good time, but make good decisions.
Okay.
Yeah, welcome. I know I already talked to you and said hi, but I'm so excited for you to have Oxford be your home for the next four years. It really is a journey to live in Oxford, and it's a super great place to go to college, I happen to know. But yeah, it's great, I think, and with that, you all are fantastic, and so this message does clearly not go to you. For the other folks, it is your home, please treat it as such, it's our home. And I note to you all, if in four years from now you could not toss your tennis shoes over the power lines, it would be great. To any seniors who are watching, please stop doing that, it makes no sense. But yeah, otherwise, I'm super excited, I mean, yes, there are lots of adjustments to make, but we make them every year when the students come back. You all are, as we noted, three to one to residents, but we're excited you're here. It's a totally different town when you're back, so welcome and go Red Hawks.
I wanted to say three thank yous, or four, one, the first one to TJ and Dusty for being here, I wish you were always here. And mainly because I'm a dog lover, I don't want TJ to think I'm stalking him. And also to Mayor Snavely, because that was not easy to have to, you have to interrupt people and make sure you maintain order, and it was not personal at all, it just, there's a time for public comment, and our mayor is very fair about it, and that's why I like him a lot, that he treats everyone like that. And also to David, because I know where your heart is and you try so hard, and I hope, you know, that, that a kernel of your spirit lives on, right? So, because we will be term limited in November, so these people coming, like, yeah, take what you want with that. So yeah, thank you for your effort.
Thank you. Amber?
Welcome to the students. So for those who are listening and are wondering who we're talking to, we have like a much larger audience than we typically do at a council meeting. And Counselor Pritraj, Counselor French, and myself were able to speak to this really vibrant group of young people who came in a week early through Miami-bound. Thank you, Maggie, for, for being here, and John Forn, and we talked about city government, why we do what we do, and you got a real taste of the challenges, the disagreements, but we hope that you come back to others. This shouldn't be the only one that you come to. And we meant what we said when we said if there's an opening on a commission, students are welcome to apply as well. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, I agree with all the sentiments already made, and I'm not going to add anything to it.
So yeah, I've taken up enough of the agenda, but this is to those of folks who are out there who, you know, change is hard. And, and because moving off of center towards the future is, takes a lot of push, and you win some proportion of the ones that you fight for and you lose some proportion. So, but that doesn't mean you don't continue to fight, because if you rack up enough wins, it starts to add up to a bicycling network. We may some be able to ride on the streets that actually have sidewalks on them, because they don't produce themselves. Change comes with a fight. And so, so I apologize, I was passionate about this, I'm disappointed about the outcome, I'm, I'm disappointed that I was, that I lost my temper. I've been at this apparently too long now and know too much, and so I, I look forward to other people taking on the mantle of, of our priorities, and, and I wish them well in making the change.
Thank you, David. I think I just want to, I had on my list to talk about what an honor it was to speak to the police department. On behalf of council, I thank them, and I thank them kind of profusely, I guess, but I, I thank them because we bring them up periodically for a lot of different things that they do for our community, and they respond responsibly. And it's not easy to deal with our changing community, and we're about to go through a transition, and I've said this a number of times, but with my friends and I, we talk about, what are the two favorite weekends that you have in Oxford? Well, the first favorite weekend is when you all leave, because we get parking uptown and stuff, it's really cool, and we get our town back. But the second favorite weekend is when you all come back, and we're really glad to have you here. It's an exciting new year. For those who are first years, I just want to express my optimism. Both my kids went through exactly what you're going through, and Miami-bound is a really awesome program, and I'm glad that you all took advantage of it, and hope you and all the students at Miami have a great year. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Same move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. We are adjourned.
By email?
Yeah.
We'll figure out a time to meet.
I think three times you said what I was about to say.
Thanks.
So you beat me to it? Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Yes, I think you'd like to, so if you would.
I knew you'd go for the dog.
Good to see you.
I have a good view of
I think it's not ready.
I had a student in my class, San Diego State.
Have a good night.
And he had a dog that looked almost exactly like her. And he came in every day, and we became sad.